Thank you very much for coming. This is a great turnout. I honestly didn't know what to expect. And already, I feel like it's successful. So we can go home now. Thank you for having me. I'm Aaron Claus. And I'm the principal planner for the city of Lynn. And I want to point out Lauren Drago, the associate principal planner. And councillor Hogan is here too with us with the city to talk to you a little bit about the South Harbor implementation plan. And I'll get into that a little bit. We have UTIL here with us over in the corner. There's our consulting team doing this project with us and for the city. I also want to point out Florrie in the back, who's on the zoning board of appeals. Danielle Smith is the policy director of the mayor's office. So thank you all for coming tonight. So real briefly, before I would like to hand it off to councillor Hogan for a few seconds. This is an opportunity for us as a community to come together. I know there's a lot of work that has been done to create a vision for the redevelopment and reuse of the waterfront. We're not looking to replace that. We're looking to advance that work and identify specific actions the city can take, investments that we can make to implement and ensure that that vision that was created by the community can come to fruition and comes to fruition in a coherent cohesive manner. And that we're also driving towards the community benefits that were articulated in those visioning processes. So before we get into the presentation, I just want to hand it off to councillor Hogan for a moment.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming because this is what it's about. We have a community meeting. We want people to come. We've got LCTV here so we can get this broadcast to people that couldn't make it tonight. But this plan has been worked on with our planning department and UTIL for quite some time now and putting it all together. We want to be very transparent and open and explain these things as they go on. A couple of weeks ago, we had a walk around meeting in the Alley Street neighborhood. And we had about our 20, 25 residents come out and walk the neighborhood and just talk about some of the stuff that's in the plan. And it's just getting this stuff out here so we can let the people know the ideas that are coming up from the input that we got from the residents and from all the work that the planning department's done. So at this time here, I'll give it to Lauren and she can take over from here.
Thank you councillor. Just some housekeeping before we get started. We are providing simultaneous interpretation in Spanish with Martina. Would you introduce yourself in Spanish?
Martina Peña. I'm with the New American Association of Massachusetts, interpreting English to Spanish if needed.
Do you want to say it in Spanish or?
I don't know how to use it. I am here to translate inglés y español.
All right, we're good. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Tassquina Trune. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. I'm Tassquina Trune. And I'm a senior planner and designer with UTIL. And we've been working very closely with the city, the South Harbor implementation plan. I just want to thank you all for taking time to come here on a Thursday evening. And we just have a short presentation for you all just to give you some context and background of the planning. And we're going to share some initial concepts that we've been working on with the city. But tonight is really about hearing from all of you. So we're going to treat this as an informal session. So after this short presentation, we'll have some maps out here. Hopefully, we can join these tables and we can all collectively sort of talk about it. And you're more than welcome to ask us any clarifying questions. So just a quick overview. Sorry, it's a little lagging. The sort of study area that we're working with is sort of roughly 400 acres of development area bound by the train tracks, the General Edwards Bridge and Blossom Street. And I'm sure as Aaron mentioned, as you all know, there's been numerous planning efforts around this area and surrounding area as well. This is not a plan that's starting from scratch. It's about sort of clarifying a more cohesive vision that ties all these different efforts together.
Can I just add one thing to that, Tassquina? A lot of the planning and visioning work that the community did with the city focused on the waterfront stopped at the Linway. So in addition to taking the visioning work that you all helped us with to create a redevelopment strategy for the waterfront, this is looking to advance that work, but also think about how can we connect the neighborhoods and the redevelopment opportunities like at the Gearworks site together across the Linway and think strongly about how do we make sure the Linway becomes a connected tissue rather than a barrier to the waterfront? That's one of the key objectives of this work. That's why this is a little bit larger geography.
And this effort is directly building off of Vision Lynn, the comprehensive plan that was just adopted in June, where we worked with the Lynn community to identify the waterfront as a priority area for transformation. And when we talked about what does transformation mean to the community, it was about thinking of this area as a new vibrant mixed-use district that has opportunities for new public infrastructure, access to open space and a more sort of connected transit network system. And that vision is consistent and aligned with several other plans in the area and other engagement efforts. So we've heard throughout our own efforts with the community as well as other city efforts, including the Transit Action Plan, the Revised Waterfront Master Plan, Open Space Master Plan. This idea of different networks coming together and creating a more cohesive vision for the area so that future development decisions are not sort of ad hoc here and there, but there's actually a clearer picture of how everything is informing each other. And so this plan itself, the implementation plan, is sort of a critical next step to realize the community priorities and vision. So we are thinking about sort of how can we catalyze future private development and public investment to maximize community benefits in the area. And through this planning process, we're also looking at what existing infrastructure exists right now. What are the current gaps? You know, where does the city need to invest so that we can accommodate the kind of visionary development that we're looking for? This includes enhancing the transit network, improving the street grid, looking at existing water, electric sewer systems, but also understanding that this is not going to happen overnight. It's not going to just happen tomorrow. It's going to be an incremental process.
Yeah, and one, sorry, Tassquina, if I could just jump in really quickly here. And this graphic shows an example of what we're trying to address with this. We're seeing development, private investment on the waterfront now. Many of you may have seen Linmart, the former Linmart site under development. There's a 550 unit, not mixed use really, but it's more of a multifamily project under construction now. There's another project that's been approved across the street at 811 Linway. There's been designs for development of the Gearworks for many years now. And sometimes what we're finding in these developments is that they're happening separately and sort of in a vacuum. The infrastructure doesn't quite line up perfectly. Creates some sort of conflict with where access drives are at the Linway. How does the ground floor treat each other? Is there an active ground use? Is there retail restaurants facing the street? And so what we're really hoping to do with this plan, this is just a really specific example, but we're hoping to do with this plan is to articulate very clearly how do we make sure that they're seamlessly coming together? And as Tassquina said, these projects are going to happen iteratively. They're owned by different parties. And as they develop, we want to make sure that they're developing in concert. So at the end of that transformation, it feels like a complete neighborhood. It's all connected as a complete neighborhood.
And when we're talking about development anywhere, and especially in the waterfront, we're not just talking about development for development's sake. The whole point is that we should be getting community benefits out of this kind of investment in our community. And so when we started this project, we were focused on some of these benefits. We really wanted to see more jobs in Lynn. That's something that came through loud and clear in Vision Lynn in our comprehensive planning, that we need more jobs, more businesses, more employment happening in our city. At the same time, we also know that housing has been a real struggle for a huge amount of our community. We need to be building more housing as well. Additionally, there's a lot of opportunity in the waterfront for parks and waterfront access. For a long time, we've been sort of turning away from the waterfront. But we've got the waterfront access. It's amazing. We should be able to get to that as a public easily and safely and be able to enjoy that space. In addition, there is increased tax benefits as well for the city to pay for the services that we deserve. You do need taxes to pay for that. And additional development and new growth is a key way that we generate those funds. And then additionally, climate resilience is definitely a priority as well for something that's by the water. We're talking about sea level rise. We need to be thinking about the long-term resilience of a neighborhood like the waterfront. And then finally, we also want to be looking at safer and more convenient mobility. I see people walking along the Linway all the time. It's really scary to cross that intersection. Frankly, I don't have a lot of fun when I'm driving it. So what can we be doing to make sure that these intersections are easier to get through, that it feels safer to walk to the waterfront, that it feels safer maybe to bike or to use a scooter? We can be making a lot of improvements to make it easier to go through the existing area. And I'll talk through a little bit about what we mean about the tax benefits. Because if you're not in municipal government, you might not think about this all the time. But this map shows in the height of what you're seeing on the map, that's how much tax that we get from the property based on how many acres it is. So you can see in the downtown, we have these really tall dark blue towers. That's like something like the Caldwell and the Mosaic. These really big buildings on small parcels, those have a big impact on our tax base. And you can see in other areas, you have smaller developments, smaller homes. So per acre, you're getting a little bit less of a tax benefit. And we're seeing the same thing in the waterfront here. So you might look through the waterfront drive-through and see all of these businesses and think that that's a net positive for the city. And it is. But we could be getting more from that area if we think ahead and we think about density. And it makes a really big difference for the city's budget. I know it's kind of a weird way to think about it, but it is a huge community benefit. So these are the community benefits we started with. This is what our priorities were when we first hired UTIL. But since then, we've done some work in the community. As councillor Hogan talked about, we walked through with a lot of the neighborhood residents that live there. We've heard from feedback online from what people have thought as we've talked about the project. And so we're adding a few things here based on what we heard from everyone else. First of all, for the existing neighbors that live in the neighborhood, they talked a lot about wanting improved sidewalks, improved intersections, improved streetscape, a better experience for the folks that have lived there, made their homes there. They keep immaculate gardens. They really love their community. We could be doing more to provide a higher quality of life for people that already live in this area. In addition, we want to talk about a sensible mix of uses. We'll talk about this a little bit more later. But there's examples right now where you might have somebody who's selling natural gas next to a residential home. We don't love that. So we're talking about bringing more businesses, bringing maybe even more industrial into the city. But we need to be mindful to make sure that all of these different uses can get along nicely. We also heard about vacant or underutilized properties and really wanting to see those change into something more beneficial to the community. I also heard from predominantly young families that they'd really like more to do in the waterfront. They loved that we had the film screenings on the waterfront over the summer. They wanted to see more activities that they could go to, reasons to kind of get out of the house and out and about. And then environmental improvements as well. This can touch on a couple of different things. But we hear time and time again how important it is to Lynn, that we clean up our beaches, that we deal with these sewer issues. And that came through loud and clear with our feedback here. To be clear, it's a little bit outside of our study area, but I hear the message loud and clear. It's a big part to making sure that our waterfront is accessible and healthy for everybody. And then in addition to that, because it's a historic industrial area, you're also probably looking at maybe contaminated properties for some of these old vacant properties. And so we need to be keeping in mind the environmental aspect of the work that we're doing, not just in terms of the long-term climate resilience, but also for the health of the community right now.
All right. I'll hand it over to Kevin for a moment.
Thanks, Lauren. My name is Kevin Chong. I am architect and designer with UTIL. So later in the presentation, we'll be sharing some initial concepts around street grids and land use frameworks. But before we do that, I wanted to, you know, help us set the stage by introducing or kind of going through some of the existing conditions, ongoing plan initiatives that will come up in our discussion. This is a little bit small. We'll have a printed map that we can all look at later. And so highlighting some of the existing conditions, some of the sites that Aaron mentioned on the south side of Linway, including 8810 Linway over here, the South Harbor site, and then also 811 Linway across the street. There are a few assets related to mobility that I wanted to highlight, including the Riverworks commuter rail station that's currently close to the shoreline there. And then Lynn Community Path, which is connected to the Northern Strand Trail that stops currently just outside our study area of Ambury. And then there's also the Ferry Terminal providing access to and from Boston. So currently, you'll see that connectivity and access to the waterfront is limited. This is a former landfill that will become Harbor Park very soon. So that would be one of the first steps towards that. All right. So we're starting to layer on top of this drawing some of the ongoing developments, developments underway, so under construction or generally in the pipeline. And so that includes 8810 Linway with 550 units, multifamily residential. And then across the street, 811 Linway with over 200 residential units and some ground floor retail as well. And then, of course, the Phase 1A of Lynn Harbor Park will cap the former landfill and, you know, some of the underutilized industrial sites in the area and provide a 22-acre park space. And then here is a graphic that's a little bit more subjective, including some of the more speculative visioning efforts. So right off the bat, you'll see we've included the Gearworks concept that was developed during the Vision Lynn process. This is a, you know, a concept for a large-scale holistic transformation of the area, providing more jobs, more housing, a healthy mix of uses and some desired connectivity and public realm connections to transit and the waterfront as well, planning for future connections to the waterfront. And so part of this effort includes a recommendation to shift the Riverworks station closer to downtown, better serving neighboring communities. And then also, we've included here the other product, the South Harbor project that currently in its current design provides over 800 units of residential and then also provides a public park and promenade along the waterfront. And then there will be future phases of the Lynn Harbor Park, further improving the coastal waterfront area here. And then also the west and the east side of the park providing additional amenities, like better parking, cafes and so on, visitor centers. So then from that understanding, you know, we've sort of identified the parcels and roadways that we think are in play as we continue to develop street grid and land use concepts. And so these are, so parcels in light yellow over here. So understanding that we're not going to be able to move Lynn water and sewer or the public works over there or some of the sub-stations with national grid. And so really visualizing what's in play for us.
Dramatic pause between every slide.
Oh, there we go. And then just some images that are available showing us the concepts of the developments on the south side of the study area. So that includes the 811 Linway with about 200 residential units with ground floor kind of a nice pedestrian retail experience. 810, 8810 Linway with two phases, but over 500 units in total. And then also the South Harbor Development, 830 Linway with over 800 residential units.
Is there a question?
Oh, okay.
In the lower left box?
Yes.
What is the grayish sort of rectangular shape that was there? That?
Oh. Oh, that's, that's water. Yeah, that's actually, yeah, that's actually showing you the way the land parcelization works out on the South Harbor. One of the parcels of land that includes most of the former seawall, the wooden seawall that's degrading, it jumps out into the harbor, you know, about, I don't know, 400 or 500 feet for some reason. So that, that's water. That's, that's part of the harbor.
So it's just shallow water.
It's just, yeah, yeah. There's a, there's a small, there's a small sort of shallow, you know, boating road there. But yeah, there's not much there. There's not development opportunity, that's for sure.
It's kind of hard to see the details back here. Do you have any printouts?
Yeah. Yeah, later, we'll definitely, we'll drop a breakout and there'll be plans that we can all stand around and look at. This just gives you the context here. Please ask questions along the way, though.
I do have one question. With all this exciting development, where is all the traffic going to go? That's the problem.
That's coming later. Perfect question. You're a plan. So we're going to get right into that. This is, this is a key aspect of why we're doing this work. And Kevin's going to get right into that. Yeah, he's going to get right into that.
Okay, Aaron. So then, just kind of to finish setting the stage, we're also, there's also included a graphic from the 2017, I think, waterfront open space master plan where, you know, the Harbor Park came from. And so, and then also highlighting a few simultaneous efforts in improving the street network. So that includes the Blossom Street intersection, pedestrian design improvements, Hanson Street reconstruction and Reimagine Linway, thinking about how to reconfigure Linway to accommodate multimodal traffic. And with that, I'll hand it over to Tim.
Do you mind continuing to flip? You're very good at it. That'll drive me crazy. So if you assist me by going forward next. I'm Tim, by the way, also from UTIL. So it was an excellent question because the problem with the study area is that between the rail corridor and the water, all you've got is the Linway. And so on both sides of the street, you've got to go to the Linway. Like, and that's already why the Linway is complicated. And that, you know, the only outlets are Blossom and Commercial. And so that's not the planning because what is really better is a distributed network where you have lots of choices. And so we got to the same point that you did when we were looking at all this development, which is there's almost no other way to go for cars to go, to think about pedestrians and people wanting to walk back to the neighborhood here. And so that's what we started to look at in a very specific way next. So our proposal, flip back and forth, like we can't go fast here, is to take existing Circle Ave, which only goes for two blocks, and to, in a plan the city's going to have, extend it to the south and extend it all the way up to Blossom Street. And then take Alley Street and think about that as another parallel street that sneaks all the way along the edge of the rail corridor. Which means that if you live in Lynn and you want to get here someday, maybe you'd never have to get on the Linway. How cool would that be?
Oh, my God.
And so, so if you want to clap now or it's still a bore. The planner's happy, huh? And, and that's called Navy Road now. There's a, there's a kind of way to get back to it. It's part of the MBTA property. And this is tied to another idea we have, which is the flag stop at Riverworks won't work in the future. And looking in the medium future where I heard that the T wants $20 billion this year.
24 billion.
24 billion, which seems about right. When the commuter rail is electrified to Beverly Depot, which will be the first phase, the train service will be much better to Lynn. We can all believe that. And we're recommending to move the Riverworks station a little bit further to the north. And I'll show you a kind of before and the after here, which I think is next, right? Now, these are, these are the proposed extensions of Alley to Navy and Circle Ave. So you see it's two parallel streets. And those streets will be quieter. They'll be more like neighborhood streets. And then the Linway can keep being sort of the Linway, but with fewer curb cuts too. Because by doing this, all of the properties that now have curb cuts, because they have to on the Linway for the most part, can have their curb cuts in the back. So we can reduce right turn in and right turn out on those properties when they're redeveloped in the future. And by the way, until those parallel streets go in, it's probably going to, development will be very slow anyway. So we've been working with the city. They're going to have a kind of map guide so that when individual property owners and developers come and say, "We want to do a development here," they'll say, "Well, we got to partner with you to build this section of the street." That's the concept. Next. And so you can see the existing street system in the blue with the ladder streets kind of coming off of it and this kind of new network that we're proposing. This is something, by the way, that other cities are doing with great success. A good example is a new street parallel to Morrissey Boulevard in South Boston. Just when you come out of the Rotary there, it's got two blocks built. And when the Stop and Shop goes away, that street will keep on going. So these things happen incrementally over 10, 15, 20 years. So, but that was a plan I was also involved with. And the other place where this is happening is in Cambridge in that industrial area in Alewee, where streets have mapped and each developer comes and may have to partner with the city, you know, the kind of trade-offs about who pays for what. But very slowly, also that street grid is being built. Next. And then the idea is that, it's kind of hard to see, we'll have the map, is that the pedestrian connections, which will include, of course, along the waterfront, will favor Circle Ave over the Linway when it's connected all the way through. And then still those key crossing streets, which we're prioritizing as pedestrian streets, especially when the Gearworks side is built out. So we think there's much more opportunity for the ladder streets at right angles to be super pedestrian friendly. I mean, there'll be new sidewalks along the Linway too. But that's a kind of better quality of life in terms of walking around.
And that pedestrian, that pedestrian walkway along the harbor, is that going to be like a boardwalk? Or is that going to be, is that going to be, they're going to fix the wall, the retaining wall that's collapsed?
Yeah, this is all part of the Harbor Park plan. Yeah, I could talk about that a little bit. So the waterfront open space master plan that we referenced earlier, articulates and provides side by lines for a series of pedestrian and bicycle connections across the waterfront. It's really, that plan envisioned open space and path connections and corridors as the connecting tissue for the redevelopment waterfront. One of the sort of key or keystone elements is a waterfront promenade that would run from GE Bridge, would wrap around the harbor all the way up at least to the edge of Harbor Park. It may have to jump behind national grid because it's an active industrial site, but then come back to the harbor at the Ferry Duck. And that pathway needs to be at least 15 feet wide and in some places, 20 feet wide and wider. And some places, it could be a boardwalk. Most likely, it's going to be a paver or paved pathway with sort of the park amenities you might think, you know, seating, lighting, trash cans. And throughout the series, as you're, as you're walking along, there are other opportunities for passive and active recreational uses.
There is a boardwalk further up by the Lynn Heritage Park, right?
Correct.
It's a small one. But it seems to be degrading. Is there any, any plans to fix that?
Yeah, there are plans. So DCR owns that. The Department of Conservation and Recreation is a state agency.
Yeah.
They have plans and I believe they've gone out to bid for the reconstruction.
Oh, good.
Including Lynn Heritage State Park. So that's the park right next to it.
Yeah.
And the whole idea is this is that across the waterfront is that these pathways would connect up. So you could literally walk from Heritage State Park to say, South Harbor to go to a restaurant and be in a pathway that'll pull away.
Yeah, that looks good.
Well, yeah.
Can I ask you a question about the new park? Who maintains that new park? City of Lynn or DCR?
It's a, it will be a city park.
We have the resources to.
We will, we will, yeah. And part of that, and this is, this is why the point that Lauren was making about fiscal resources or taxes, this new growth that's happening and future new growth that we're planning for is critical for resources to the community to provide services. Some of it's improving and maintaining our parks. We heard that across the city in the comprehensive plan. So this new growth helps provide the resources to do that. It also helps provide the resources to improve and support public It also helps provide the resources to improve and support public safety, fire, police, the schools. It's critical for financing and building the schools. So all of this stuff is sort of wrapped in together. It's all interconnected.
So one more thing about that park. So the city will maintain it, but why wouldn't you want DCR to maintain since they own the other parks and they can either connect into it, and then there'd be less burden on the City of Lynn, if the taxpayers are not paying for the city to do that? It's a state-run project, is that right?
No, no, it's a city project. We're partners with the state. Yeah, the state contributed $7 million to the construction of the park. They were by far the largest resource to building it, but it is a city project. Everything on this screen, almost everything would be city-owned. There is a, there is a fishing pier that, you know, that you're aware, that's a DCR pier. That's the only DCR facility on this, other than the Linway. Heritage State Park is, is one. I think there's a conversation to be had about how do we think about all this open space, and how can we manage it as a single entity? That's a conversation we'd love to have at DCR. They're, you know, they're also an agency that is limited in resources. They're not standing up and saying, "Well, take that on." But we, there's conversations that we'd like to have with them about how can we, how can we tie all this open space together, so at the very least, it's managed as a single park.
You might get a friends group, too.
We would, this is, maybe this is where it's going to take.
I'm a member of many friends groups, and we do a lot of maintenance and cleaning ourselves.
We'll get your number before you.
It's a possibility.
I just had a question, I don't know if you can answer it. It's, a few years back, a few guys were trying to develop the waterfront there, and they were told that they had to dredge the harbor, which cost billions of dollars, and they said that they, they wouldn't do it then, so they backed out. How is it all of a sudden the harbor's being developed? I mean, did the government provide money, or did something, what happened? It wasn't dredged, but they were told.
Yeah, there's, I don't know the specifics to that, that plan.
Nobody seems to know.
This, this, this plan does not, this plan does not rely on commercial, industrial, marine uses. There are in here, and maybe Tim could point it out, that area is what's called a DPA, it's a designated port area, meaning marine industrial uses are the primary use there. That area actually has a federal channel in front of it. It's a wide and deep channel that does not need to be dredged.
Well, that was in a commercial issue. They were going to build residential housing, and they were told that they had to redo the wall, and in order to do that, they had to dredge the harbor right in front. And nobody wanted to pay for it, and a lot of those plans got canceled. But no one's explained how all of a sudden EDIC approved this, went right through, and nobody dredged the harbor.
Yeah, I don't, I can't speak to that plan, but you, there's no need to dredge the harbor to redevelop the waterfront.
But they stopped those other people from building because of that. They said they were pollutants and.
It must have been an earlier project.
Can I say one more thing? So you, you see they have a really good team here, and they're really doing a good job of trying to develop the waterfront, meaning that the prior people had individual private investors trying to build things.
Right.
They're developing from the waterfront all the way back to the tracks, from the, from the bridge all the way to the T station. So you have to look at what they're doing in a whole.
Yeah, I just wondered why that, why that happened. No one can explain it to you.
It might have been not the right time. A lot of it's timing, too.
We can take that offline, if you have a question here.
Just a comment, well, two. What is, dredging is no longer as favorable as it was five or 10 years ago because of the release of pollutants being so much of a problem. But is there a group advocating for a percentage for the arts, middle arts, with all of this building going on? Given how important the murals are downtown to the identity of the city, all these public spaces, something needs to sort of be a draw in there?
We're looking for, the question was about a percent for the arts. This is a funding program for public art. There have been organizations advocating for that. I think there's, there's not a strong drive force. What we're doing instead is looking to work with state, the state agencies like Mass Development, and seeking funding to advance programs like the Creative Cities Program that we're a part, a partner in right now, which is bringing $500,000 to the city for arts and culture over a two-year period, maybe even longer, working with Mass Cultural Council, bringing resources through them. So there's, the percent of the arts is a great way to fund public art. It's also challenging, but we're, we're looking at a range of resources that could eventually bring more public art to this waterfront.
Isn't there a Gateway Cities, too? Gateway Cities grant?
The Creative Cities Program is part of that, yeah.
Part of that.
So why don't we get back to the, a lot of these are great points, and that's great for the breakout session.
Yeah, just to continue the story, one thing when we made these maps, started looking, looking at it, is that you've got Blossom, you've got Shepherd, you've got Commercial, and then you've got Harding, to connect from Circle Ave to the extended Navy Road, and we realized it would be ideal if Day Street also connected, because then you would have an even street grid for many more choices. So I think it's, it's just an idea we have. And again, the, the issue with these is that all of these proposed street right-of-ways go through private property. But the idea is that when development is going to happen along the Linway, it's going to be bigger chunks of land. That's how developers build these days. So it's teeing up the city's ability to, when a project of the scale that Kevin talked about here comes, say, "We want your drive to be a new street that actually works with this network." So that's the general idea. And I think it's related to the percent art issue, because I think from a policy priority standpoint, it's getting those developments to cross-subsidize these streets that might be more important in the first phase than art, right? Because you, the ask for the developers is, "You got to partner with us to build a section of the street." You know, it, it, it might be too much of a lift to say it's 1% art, too. So we, we haven't worked out the, the economics of those asks that you make of developers, but it's just something to keep in mind. But this, that some of the future developers are going to have this responsibility to help achieve this. Next. Okay, so the other thing that is very cool, as we were, as we were thinking about this, one reason to move the Riverworks stop, because we do work for the MBTA, too, is that the T likes to build new stations not exactly where the existing stations are. And it's a different case with Riverworks, I know, because it's already a flag stop. But when we were looking at the map, we thought if the new Riverworks station was a little bit further north, it might potentially serve a bigger population within a kind of nice walk shed, or a, a, a walk distance. And so this is the existing, it's a little bit hard to see. This is exactly on the, on, on, on the streets that exist, how far you get for a 10-minute walk. So this is the end of this tributary. Of course, you can get into the Riverworks site, but you see, it doesn't touch much of the neighborhoods. It, it, it really focuses on, on the industrial sites that used to be there, which is why the stop was there. So if we go to the next slide, very slowly and not dramatically, by moving it north, suddenly this entire neighborhood is captured in the walk shed. So suddenly people who didn't have good access to the T before, suddenly have excellent access, and it also captures a much larger area of that future buildup. And so, and we're, we're, there's a, a kind of, kind of right-of-way there that we looked at as a potential public access point for, there's also more room for the T to do a new station there, there's more T property there. So we think that the before and after that is especially exciting. Do you want to talk, is this me or you, Kevin? It's me? Okay. We've done a little bit of thinking about these new streets, and you can see that there's ample sidewalks, we've got a planting zone, we have 10-foot-six lanes for the streets that have less truck traffic, which are the kind of cross streets. And then because we want to get any servicing and trucks off of the Linway to get the curb cuts off the Linway, we've got slightly lighter, wider lanes where the, the trucks are, but for those streets, we're proposing off-street bicycle lanes, separate from the trucks. So this is a kind of the beginning menu, but these dimensions helped us figure out more precisely the amount of real estate that was necessary for the right-of-way. So it's a kind of, it's a toolkit now about what those streets might look like in the future. These are, by the way, cross-sections. But we, you know, we, we're still imagining businesses here, even life science labs have loading docks with trucks that come, so we're being very mindful of kind of managing the And this is a, a kind of composite that shows that new street network. I think you could recognize the Riverway here. And it's an initial idea about land uses for future development in the future. Just the color coding, yellow means residential, and the purple color means industrial, but the lighter purple, the deeper purple might be high bay industrial space on the ground floor and commercial uses or, or kind of life science uses on the upper floor. So we're imagining those being denser uses and maybe taller buildings on the water side of the Linway, and kind of behind the hillside of, of the Harbor Park. This is one scenario where we imagine residential to just pass Harding Street as it connects into the Gearworks site. And then another scenario that I think we prefer, next. Oh, by the way, this is what we mean by the dark purple. A commercial space, flex commercial space or life science labs on the upper floors, and then high bay space on the ground floor, and maybe even a way to tuck in some parking, maybe. So if you go back, I guess, I'll, I'll point out that that's really representing kind of the sites on the water side between Harding and Commercial Street. Next. Oh, this is a new one. And then we realized because of the existing residential neighborhood and the size of the lots here, which are smaller, that it might be nice to feather some residential on the very north end of the study area, to more compatible uses for the existing people who live here along Alley Street. And so this might be a more interesting mix, to get even more of a balance of residences and industrial and commercial businesses all within the study area. And this is for that northern end of the residential area, we're imagining smaller-scale development, not the very large development that's happening on the south end, the images that Kevin showed. You know, it might be infill buildings at this scale, this is the size of two triple-deckers. It might be row houses, it might be even four-story buildings in some areas, but it's not the big complex, the apartment complexes that are happening on the south side. Oh, and then next steps. I guess, you do next steps?
Yes. So, so this is the time that we can actually now look at the maps in person, like in a bigger way, and I think the best way we could do this is turning the tables, maybe, and making two groups. So we're all sitting around the tables, we have like two sets of maps, and we have markers and post-its, and we're all going to be walking around, so if you have questions for us. We also have the presentation right here, so if you want us to flip back to a slide to clarify something, it will be right here. And we also have printouts of the entire presentation for anyone who wants to sit and really dive deep and look at it if you have more specific questions. And just generally, next step, so at the onset of this process, we talked to many stakeholders in the study area, from property owners, National Grid, some residents. So that's how we sort of started talking through what would a new street grid look like. And now we're going to have a second round following this meeting, after we sort of further enhance, after talking to all of you, getting your feedback, and incorporating into this new, into the new concept, then having a second round of more focused discussion with stakeholders. We're also going to dig deeper into what does it mean to actually build these streets? What's the feasibility, what kind of sort of infrastructural considerations do we need to take into account? So that'll be on us in the next stage. And we're aiming towards February, March for our draft plan, so there's still a little bit more time to fine-tune and think through, you know, what are, what are, what are the options? And lastly, Lynn and Common website, if you want to stay in touch with the process, not only for this plan, but all multiple other plans that are, are, I use to coordinate with this effort.
Following the presentation, participants were given the opportunity to participate in focus groups and ask more questions of the planning team. They ranged from more connections to Harbor Park, ensuring safe crossing on the Linway, to further details about new traffic flow on Blossom Street. Money proved to be a central theme, including who will pay for necessary infrastructure upgrades, including stormwater, as well as suggesting the building of a hotel to increase revenue for the city. Climate change also took a front seat, with people emphasizing the need for more trees in Lynn for a cleaner, greener city, as well as the cleaning up of soils and natural resources around the development sites. Additional questions, including inquiries into whether or not artist programming will be used to increase interest in the site. A clarification point by the planning department is, the South Harbor site proposed by Samuels and Associates is separate from the South Harbor implementation plan being discussed in this meeting. For LCTV News, I'm Dani Vettori.